Can everyone just check their cell phones to make sure they're off? There'll be a five-minute, per-person, audience participation. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from April 6th, 2023?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Brian.
Second.
Thank you, Bob. All in favor? Let's see correspondence.
This may be the shortest list ever. A draft copy of the meeting minutes from April 20th, 2023, regular meeting of the village board and a draft copy of the April 6th, 2023 public hearing have been distributed. Bank of New York Mellon statements were received for the weeks of April 3rd, April 10th, and the month of March 2023. And the village clerk received a water report for March 2023 from the superintendent superintendent Frank Bowles. That's all I have.
Thank you. Town on Hope, I didn't hear from Jim, but I know he was away. So since I didn't add, or since we didn't add Mike Mareska in, our police chief, Mike, welcome.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything?
Sure, I just wanted to come by today and introduce myself. I'm the new police chief. I took over for Paul Ricard here in the town of Hope. Can't promise I come to every meeting, but I do want to try to come to most meetings. I think it's important to stay involved and informed of what's going on everywhere. If anyone ever needs anything, feel free to reach out to me. The email, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take any questions as well.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you for coming. I don't know that I've ever, again, I didn't attend all of those meetings, but I don't know that they've had a police come and talk. But thank you for coming to meetings. Okay, attorneys report.
So the only thing I have to report on this evening is the code enforcement action on our 22nd Seville property, which I appealed before the town of Mount Hope Court two weeks ago, as did the property owner. I laid out for the court the agenda the village is seeking to pursue, which is there were four main items that we want rectified. Cleanup of brush on the property, removal of a very dilapidated garage, removal of a dilapidated trailer, and badly needed roofing repairs. The court noted all that in the court's records. And we agreed that we would start getting the brush off, since that seemed to be the easiest task to accomplish. The court indicated that Judge Folsner doesn't really want the case lingering on his calendar. That he said another conference for two weeks from tonight, first Thursday of May. And he said if it's not resolved at that point, that's an agreement. They'll probably put it on the court's trial calendar for either June and July. So I was in touch. I had email communications with Rich Manley, who's taking the lead for the code enforcement on the project. And he indicated that the property owner had in fact made some progress during the last two weeks. He cleaned up a bunch of brush. Apparently he did, and I understand it's been confirmed. He's made application for a building permit. He started doing the roofing repairs that are needed. He also apparently talked to Rich about putting a fence up in front of the objectionable trailer. So it looks like hopefully progress is being made. We'll see what happens in two weeks. And that's really all I have to report on. I understand that a new village attorney will be taking over representation of the village after tonight. So I just want to thank the board and everybody for having had the opportunity to serve the village the past two-plus years. It's been a pleasure. I also understand them being asked to see this code enforcement action through to its conclusion, which I'm happy to do, so I'll be by. And maybe by in person to report periodically, or else I'll send reports to the building department liaison. I'll inquire as to what level of approval the board and the mayor want for the finalization of the settlement.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. You're special.
Thank you. I spoke to Mark outside a little bit, and this person knows that there's town cleanup going on right now, that they can bring it on down to the town, and they also know that ours starts on May 1st. So, thank you.
The property owner indicated he intended to avail himself of that service.
DPW.
Okay. I have two things that John's got to do. Water report from March 2023. The village's daily usage was 76,483. The state president's daily usage was 116,246. Built out the salt requirement forms for the New York State OGS for 2023-2024 contract. Sent them out. Working on the annual drinking water quality report for 2022. Just a reminder, bulk trash pickup is coming up week of May 1st through the 5th. And we rebuilt the backflow preventer at the firehouse.
So let everybody know, Jimmy Wilson, he passed the first part of his to-be water license. He's working on doing his D part of the license now. Hopefully by September or October, he'll be ready to take you to his walkthrough for us, and then he'll have his licenses. Yeah, he did really well. He's a very good worker. He does well. We fixed the water problem at the wall fields. The valve, the stem broke off the valve that didn't open up all the way down there. That's why they had to pull the water crank. We mowed in wheat black today. Just a reminder to let your coaches know, everybody, try to get the guys to clean up, the kids to clean up afterwards, so not 10,000 water bottles laying around. I know it's a little hard, but do that. I went to the meeting yesterday for partners in safety with the new drug policies coming out with the marijuana. We still follow it, because the guy's still following the CDLs, there's no tolerance. And that includes medical marijuana and all that. Also, I met with Lance tonight, and we went down to the park. We go over, we're gonna plant the tree for Earth Day. We'll take the hole tomorrow, and I'll have the topsoil and peat moss and some wood chips over there. The shovels will be in the building. If you need a guy there, let me know. I can have somebody come in for an hour or so to give you a hand with the treeing.
Why can't we have you?
Huh?
Why can't we have you?
Because I'm... Because I'm... I'm gonna be away. I got my grant yet this weekend, so.
No problem. Thank you, John. Thank you, Frank.
You're welcome.
Thank you for putting the flag back up on Village Hall. Thank you for hanging the new flag on the memorial over there. And thank you for taking this task on. That is a very quick last-minute thing, but I look forward to the tree event inside. Okay, thanks, guys. Fire, what do you got?
Only thing I have to report, the ladder truck we took out of service today. There's a problem with the pedestal controls turning left. So the company came down, looked at it. They're gonna get pulled together. And as soon as I get that, let you guys know. That's all.
Thank you. Trustee reports. Diane, we'll start on your side.
Building Department is starting to get really busy again. It usually does this time of year. She's issued, well, just last night, three permits and get a couple of inspections, which has been one day, so they'll be busy. You may have noticed that there are more and more residents installing solar panels on their houses. You do need a permit for that, so they can all have done so. Just a reminder that only roof-mounted panels are permitted in the village, no other types. Mark already mentioned the owner of 22 Seville will be back in court next month to verify the progress that he's made or not made on the maintenance violations. There are no current applications before the ZDA. Planning Board continues to work just on the two special use permit applications for the old school and the old church. The April Planning Board meeting, I did mention this at our last meeting, but just a reminder, that was rescheduled until April 27th at 7:00. So it's next Thursday. It will be at the firehouse, and they will also have the continuation of the public hearing on the old church. So hopefully they can wrap that up. And I'll probably mention over and over, there are positions available for alternate members of the zoning board and the planning board. So if anyone is interested in kind of feeling their way and seeing what it's all about, that's a great way to get exposure to those boards. Under local laws, I am working on the update for the firefighter's rail property tax exemption law. Dennis called me back on the one question I had. We had a long conversation. So I should have part copies of that to the board members, or I'll get them to Christine, and she can distribute it to the board members and the attorney before the next meeting to take a look over. It's almost identical to the one that the town adopted, just that ours, our old one, has a little bit more language. Nice language. Talks about, you know, the hours that are volunteered and training and all of that. So I wanted to try to incorporate that into it. Community Advisory Board. Apparently, the FCI is at the moment able to host a community advisory board meeting. However, they have not yet gotten back to me with the date or dates that they're suggesting. So we will be off-cycle, but I'm not gonna turn them down. If they say sometime in May we can get together, we'll try to do that, and I'll inform all of the board members. Just want to talk really quickly, or really ask questions of John more than anybody else. Kate distributed the electric consumption report again. Now, I know we had a problem with the water heater, and that was fixed, correct?
Yes.
Because, I'm gonna be biggest with you, so you can look at what I'm talking about. But again this month, again in March, well, no, never mind. My second question is not a problem. I just didn't know what it was. There's a second meter that's listed as 50 Main Street, which would be the park.
Okay.
What runs off of that?
I only know, we only have one meter on the building. We have...
I don't ever remember having two meters either for the park.
Well, maybe 50 Main Street isn't. Would there be anything else that we've got?
Not on Main Street.
Is it the clock? Is it very low?
Oh wait, I wonder if it's just two lines with the same meter is what she's got. Veterans Park at 50 Main Street. That's what it is.
I mean, I know that the clock isn't at 50, but there's something weird with that clock.
Yeah, no, I was misreading that. No, the clock is down below. That's simple. So, yes, it has been fixed. Thank you. What a difference. This month, the electric bill for that park, for the building and anything else, was $85 as opposed to almost $500. So whatever you did, you did good. So thanks. Couple other things. I know the Little League parade is Saturday. Unfortunately, something has come up, and I'm not gonna be able to be there for a time in 20 years, other than when it was rained out. But I don't want you to think I overslept and forgot or something. And my little nephew is gonna be marching too, so hopefully he'll be so excited he won't notice I'm not there. And last, but certainly not least, Mark, I want to thank you. You have been such a tremendous support and a pleasure to work with through the last couple of years.
Thank you very much, Sam. Everybody on the board.
That's all I have.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Diane. Lance, what do you got?
Okay, they already mentioned it, but the tree is, it's gonna be 9:00 on Saturday morning. John and I went down and found a nice location. It'll be off the trail, so we don't want to cut it down, hopefully for years down there. It's gonna be a flower tree. It'll be a cherry tree. It's about seven feet tall right now, so that tree is gonna plant on Saturday morning. So I know you're gonna make it, unless you move it early.
No, I'll be gone by then.
That'd be at 9:00. Also, the Little League, everybody knows at 9:30. I'm not gonna talk on the Little League. I'm gonna let Brian talk, and he has all his numbers. But this shit, the Little League has over 200 kids, which is a plus for the village and the town and everybody else around, bringing people into the village, which they love. But I'll let Brian give all the numbers on that one. And for Earth Day, we're mentoring elementary school here. We give them Cullen books, poster, bookmark. The mayor gonna talk more on that. And, you know, first time in two years.
Three.
Two, three, yeah. COVID didn't get in, so the kids will be all happy on that, number one. I don't have much otherwise. I'm gonna have the Saturday.
Thank you, Lance. I'm just gonna add this. When I kind of walked into this, they talked about doing this Earth Day event for the school. I thought it was a great idea, because I know it's been done in the past. So I went over, and I'm not taking your spot. I went over and gave Mrs. Downey, the principal of Otisville Elementary, 590-plus of what I'm gonna show everyone, if I show everyone. The kids are gonna draw them, send us some pictures. I kind of got the idea after I went over there and talked to the principal of why aren't we doing a tree for Earth Day? Earth Day, that's what all these pictures are, about trees, planting them, so on and so forth. So I kind of reached out to Lance and gave him the wonderful project. And thank you to you guys, too. If I didn't thank you once, I'll thank you twice. It was a last-minute thing, and sometimes last-minute things don't really work out, but it's worked out great. I look forward to the ceremony inside. That being said, Brian, what do you got?
Thanks. All right, so as everybody knows, this is a very big weekend for everybody associated with the Little League. It is our 65th season, so there's a lot going into this. I've been very busy with that. We are, like Diane said, we're gonna have a parade, starting at the old school. March will commence at 10:00. We have Howells and Otisville Fire Department along with Mike at the Mount Hope Police Department helping us maintain traffic, followed by a little ceremony and games at noon time. That's just a brief little thing on that. As Lance said, this has been a great year for the Little League. We got 241 kids, which is 15 more than we had last year. So the past five years, the numbers keep climbing, which is awesome. It's actually a feel-good. It makes me feel very honored that it keeps happening. But hopefully it continues, and hopefully the 65th will bring more people. But anyway, I digress. With the firehouse, I have taken a little bit of time back from the project proposals with the bathroom, with the ladies' women's remodel. But I am gonna pick that back up right after this weekend to get the bid proposals put together, come in for everybody's review, and then hopefully get that out and started in the summer at some point in time. Also, the fire company will be having its first-ever kickoff-to-summer-food-in-vendor event on June 3rd and 4th at the firehouse from 10:00 to 6:00 on the 3rd, and then from 11:00 to 6:00 on the 4th. More information on that will be going out at some later time. Also, real quick, Tony just let me know, just, I don't know if Rob had it, the calls for the fire department this past month, there were 19 EMS calls and 15 fire calls, a total of 34, which accumulated, looks like 15 and a half hours of time. And that's really all I have with the firehouse. I have reached out to a few individuals that would like to be part of the celebrations committee, which I believe I'm still gonna be a part of, and there's a few individuals that I'd like to keep on. Maureen is here, so I'd like to really have her continue to be a part of that. She was tremendous with helping me with Christmas. It was awesome. Thank you. And hopefully shortly, we can kind of narrow that one down.
Top of the list in your correspondence, but that's okay. We'll get back to that.
There you go.
Or we can have a list of...
Also, with my quarterly review assignments, I was trying to nail that completely done. And then with the assistance of Kate and Christine today, I was informed that I actually really can't do anything about it, because they're not done. So I can't review something that's not completed, so I really have nothing to do at this time of day.
It's because of the accountant. They don't take the law for taxes.
Taxes.
So she'll start out your metal, and you'll know when it's done.
Try to get along.
Very well, that's important.
Finally, I spoke to John a little bit, too, about Memorial Park, the bathrooms. And the gentleman that did the bathroom floors, that concession stand, I've been talking to him about possibly doing epoxy floor up there. I'm gonna get some quotes and estimates from him to see what he can do for us to kind of achieve that up there. Which leads me into my final thing, which is the procurement policy. I don't know if he's gonna be able to do it for what we currently have allotted for. And I was just wondering if there's a way that we can achieve increasing that, or what we can do to, you know, kind of go forward with the cost of everything going up. It's almost impossible to find anybody to...
Let me answer you this way. The procurement policy, we're gonna get it on the list tonight. We're gonna accept last year's, keep it. I believe the second meeting in May, you're gonna see it come up, and we're gonna revise it. I'm just getting some information from other villages to see what theirs is, to see what they raised it to, to see what other issues they're having. But I didn't make any changes to it currently, but it is gonna be on the agenda for the second meeting in May. I hope that fits into your time.
And nobody has seen the floor down at the Little League stand, what they did in there? The concession stand? Great. I meant, like, seven bucks. I think that's definitely a thing we should do with our park.
That's amazing.
And just so everybody knows, the gentleman, Rob McCaffrey, he actually donated all of that to the Little League, to his own time, his own material, everything. He just said, "Here, we're gonna help you," and just give me a little tiny sign.
I can do that.
So a lot of people coming together to help support the league. So, and that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Thank you, Brian. When we get to the reorg meeting, not only are you still gonna be on the fire department, but I also gave you buildings, which will...
My man, John.
Okay, thank you. Bob, last but not least, I promised you to be first next time, but what do you have for that?
That's okay. On Saturday, the old school, the old school community center would like to start bringing that train that the village gave to them up on the back. But we need to get in the lock gates.
I'll have the gate unlocked for you.
All right, so we're going, is it a padlock?
It's a padlock.
So if you just unlock it, then we'll lock it up when we're done. Is that not a work? That's good. Nancy Craig, the village to store in, has been getting her volunteer work crews out to spruce up the grounds up there for their open house on the first weekend in June, June 4th. We'll have more on that, because it gets a little bit closer, but you keep that date open. And the only other thing I have is on Monday, the 21st, we have a telephone meeting scheduled with a community assistance person from the Laramie Facilities Corporation.
The 24th, Monday the 24th.
Monday the 24th? That's right, that's where I got the one from.
It's okay.
I'm thinking at 1:00 PM, that's where I got the one from. John and I, we're gonna start working on the grants, but once we set this up with the guy from the EFC, we figured we might as well see what he had to say, see if we can get any guidance from him. So you'd be able to be there, John?
Yeah.
I'll remind you again, that's the 24th, 1 to 1/3. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Bob. Mayor's report. Talked about, just so everyone can see, I kind of put it here. This was the Cullen project that we brought over to Otisville Elementary. I don't know, I kind of grabbed one, because I don't know if the board got to see. I don't know if it was different in the past, but we did give the principal a letter and asked her to kind of send us some pictures and stuff of the kids drawing stuff. And I was gonna reach out to her tomorrow and see if anyone wants to attend our Earth Day tree planting. I know it's last minute, but maybe it'll come before the Little League parade. I know, I know. I am gonna need an executive session. I want to discuss an employee matter, I guess you could say. So I am gonna need that. Let's see. Tom Fagion. I reached out to Tom Fagion. I did something a little different when I was on the town side for the three buildings that they have. I put some different flags in, the county flag, the POW flag in one of the buildings, which I'd like to add here. But Tom Fagion, I want to thank him. He was able to give me my fourth county flag, which is probably unheard of. But I told him I would thank him publicly. He's not our legislator in the village, but I kind of worked with him very closely on the town side, and I reached out to him kind of before I did my oath of office here. So I thank him for that. He delivered it to me yesterday, and I appreciate it. And probably by next meeting, I'm gonna have four flags kind of hanging over where Diane said is where the American flag is. We're gonna do the four flags, the POW flag, the American flag, the county flag, and the state flag. But enough on flags.
About covered it.
That about covers it, yeah. That's pretty much all I have on my end, which I'm sure I forgot something, but that's okay. Audience participation.
Mayor Vitoria Sampa, ladies, the Pocatello Ladies' Association is doing a Lotto calendar raffle for the month of July. I have a few calendars left. I am in the process of getting more. Anybody who is interested, come see me, get in touch with me by email, via Facebook. I will get you calendars. They're $5 apiece. You can win up to $175 for July 4th, because the other dates are at different amounts. And I've got about eight with me right now. I will be getting more. And you have till the end of June to get in touch with me to get more, to get any.
Thank you. Anybody else for audience participation? Tony, you have anything to say? Okay. All business. Going right along here, all business. Let's see. Let's see. Quarterly review assignments, third quarter of the fiscal year 2023. To do by the second meeting of May. I'll just read this, because you probably guys already know what you are. Mail logs is Diane. Cash receipts is Bob Klaus, and bank regs is Brian Lowry, which we already talked about. Okay. No mow May. Said that right this time. Lois sent some information. I know we discussed this at the last meeting. And I just wanted to see if everyone was able to get more information. Did everyone get this email? Awesome. And I just wanted to see what, if anyone had anything to say. What's your feeling about it? Do you want to do it? You don't want to do it? You want Lois mad at you? What are we looking to do?
I already said I'm not mowing my backyard for the whole month.
Good answer.
I know her. No, I'm kidding. But yeah, I'm for it. Give everybody a one-month reprieve.
And I'm not gonna mow my yard for the whole year.
I have to say that I don't know particularly what the ordinance says for that, but we might as well try to get a buy, you know, for that month, everyone's approval, so.
Okay. Lance, how do you feel?
I'm mowing my front, Kev. I don't mow my front. It'd be wild to holler at me.
It's volunteer.
Yeah, I don't want to, I mean... I know, but my front would get wild, and then Mike could get mad at me, Mike Hornbacher. He didn't know where the yard was at, so I'll mow the front, but I won't mow the back. So I have no problem.
Diane, how do you feel?
It's just fun.
What I'd like to see is that the building inspector, well, let's back up, because Lois said she doesn't know exactly how it works. If the lawns reach a certain height, the building inspector sends out a letter that says you have 10 days to mow your lawn. So chances are, 10 days might bring us to the end of May, so then it would be a non-issue. But again, what my recommendation would be is that whoever is the liaison with the building inspector, get with her, develop a letter that says if you are participating in the no-mow May, please at least ensure that your front lawn is mowed within this 10-day period. And that way, we're not ignoring it, but we're letting them know that if you want to let the backyard go, it'll be in the May. I mean, that should be in the letter, that it would be okay. That's my thought.
Okay. I like the idea, so let's come to a compromise. I don't want to see any... I don't wanna see anyone not mow their front lawn. I'm looking, I'm not looking for anyone to break the law in the village because we have some people, we discussed this last meeting, that don't like to mow their lawn. So your front lawn, you have to mow, your back lawn, let's come to a compromise. How about we say you can leave half of your back lawn? Is that a fair compromise? So you gotta mow a part of it, but not all of it? And by June 1st, you gotta mow it all?
Well, definitely.
Is that a good way to put it out there?
Yeah, there should be a deadline on it, definitely. So you can't get away with, you know, saying, well, you know, it's the end of June and I did not, no. There has to be a deadline.
If you have a problem with your neighbor's lawn being high, I suggest that you call Village Hall and we will look into each case, which I highly doubt there's gonna be a lot. But if I have to go out myself and personally explain, so be it. I have no problem doing that. But I like the idea. I don't wanna change anything in the law because I realize what's gonna happen. As we joked around, we're gonna have, you know, no-mo June, no-mo July. Why mow it all?
Right.
You know, what's, what's pretty cool is if you go out and look at your lawn now, but look at it like close, which nobody ever does, I never did. But if you go and look at it, other than dandelions, which everybody has, there's a lot of flowers out there. It's amazing. So leaving a section in the backyard, you know, the bees aren't, they don't care if it's in the front yard or the backyard. They just want flowers, so. Makes sense.
I'm not really sure how to introduce this to the public. So I guess what I will do, Lois, is take your pamphlet, take the website, maybe grab one of the pictures off of here and put it out there. If you have some wording you'd like, feel free to email me because clearly I gotta put this out by June or by May 1st. Whoever the liaison is gonna be to the building department, which I don't know if you guys read your sheets yet, but we'll get there during this meeting.
Is there a way to make it so that, make it even simpler? Just like the entire village voice, whatever way they want with no-mo? Like saying, you literally have the entire month as a reprieve? Just the month?
But I think the problem with that is you're going against the local law that's already on the books that people were sitting in these seats before, it's already put there. Which is why there's a timeline.
Can you make an exemption?
That's what I was gonna say.
For, for environmental, I mean, I'm assuming it's for the, I didn't see any of this, but I'm assuming it's for the bees, right, which are endangered, yeah.
Right, so make it so like a one-month.
You could just waive them for a week.
A waive, yes, exactly, waive it for the month.
Well, that's why I say if you, someone has a complaint, call here and we'll follow through, obviously, on the end of explaining what you, um, okay. Well, listen, we have today, obviously, we have a little while to figure this out, but that's fine. If, if we're on the grins to do this, let's, at some point, over the next couple of days, whether it be through email, through text, I don't care, maybe over the next four or five days, let's figure it out. We'll get Lois's whatever input she wants to put in and I'll post something online. Fair enough? I am mowing my lawn on Sunday, so if you drive by, my front lawn will be mowed, I want to forewarn. Okay.
People are mowing their lawns.
I know they are. My lawn is just.
And it's fine, you know, it's fine. That's for sure.
I mowed my side lawn the other day.
Thank you.
It was good. But it was right by the house, you know.
Anyone else like to confess? If anyone wants, okay, all right, thank you. Okay, um, all business. Fire Department Chief Appointment, R3, the second chief, Darrell Vandermark. Anyone wanna discuss? Anyone wanna say anything? Anyone wanna throw me a motion?
Who is it? Don't think I have that in me. Have I mentioned?
I think you did. He has a dog, Darrell. He's been our training instructor for the last five years.
Oh, yeah.
His two daughters and son are active members.
I can't wait to see it with the public and say, you don't know me?
You're assuming.
Then better with faces than names, everybody knows that.
Yeah, I don't know that one, but I trust.
Yeah, trust judgment.
This is obviously.
He's not the same Vandermark who was our assistant chief before.
No, this is the father. He's a fire training instructor for the county for the state.
That part I knew that.
He was the hazmat, the guy that started the hazmat back in the 90s. He was the commander of that for 10 years. He's been helping us, like I said, the last five years, we're training all this stuff. And our certification is all. Yeah, yeah. That's amazing. I need.
Just going forward, I highly doubt you're gonna push someone to us that doesn't have a certain thing. Right. So I trust your judgment.
The appointments with all the officers, it was a six-month appointment, just going forward, so. Any changes or whatever.
Did I hear anyone give me a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Bob, you want a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. New business. This is something that I put on here because it was one of the things on my list when I got elected that I would like to see accomplished. Looking into the differences of a dedication and to memorialize something, big difference. If you guys wanna read about it, you can read about it online. I would like to do something at the Veterans Park for Blue Marisio. I had Christine look into some, well, a bunch of stuff. She actually pulled dates, which I thank you for, Christine, if I didn't already, on some projects from start going all the way forward. And one of the things that I think is, in my opinion, important here, I would like to memorialize the pavilion in the park. I would like to do a ceremony on Memorial Day after the VFW and American Legion does their event. I would like to get some signs to put on the pavilion, which if this goes through, I'll talk with Francis John and I should just do a little service in America Blue. I think he did a lot for this community, one being mayor, one being a VFW, and a bunch of other stuff, Fire Department, the list goes on and on. Anyone wanna discuss? Bob?
I think it's a great idea, 100% behind it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm with him. I like Blue.
Okay, Lance?
I have, I know, I know a little long time, one of his daughters, 1971. Never had a problem, I understand what he did for the village and he's one of the ones that actually got the park mowing there in the beginning. I see nothing wrong with it.
Okay. Diane?
Certainly, I mean, he was the past mayor for how many years? He's, as Brian said, he was involved in a multitude of things in the community. Again, I, I think it is appropriate to recognize that. The only comment I would like to make is something of that magnitude, and I think that's pretty big. I would appreciate as a board member, it having been mentioned before it was brought up in the meeting.
That's fine. So can I get a motion?
I would like to move that we dedicate or memorialize the park pavilion in memory of Blue Marisio.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I'll be talking to you soon about something, I guess. Summer concert series, kind of, I don't know that I brought this up last time, but I'll bring it up now. Um, you're right, you did, Brian. Yeah, I got it, I got it. Summer concert series, at one point, the town and village was involved. I'm not gonna go into detail because it doesn't really matter to me why they weren't involved or were not involved, but I would like to get back involved with the town on the summer concert series. It was one of my projects as a councilman that I worked on for the last eight years. I was kind of adamant about pushing this agenda through before I actually left the town of Mount Hope. I was able to work with a partner down in the town of New Windsor, who actually does the majority of scheduling. Included in that, if you do have this list, I don't know if everyone did, but I will press mine around, but included in that, number three on the list for July 18th is a local band, Radio Fomosville. So we were able to get that in there. The town of Mount Hope for 2023 will be paying out $5,100. That's the total for all the concerts. And for those that didn't see the sheet, I'll hand it to mine in a second. If Brian, you wanna hand yours, feel free. I would like to be involved and I wanna know how the board feels about it. And how I'd like to be involved is I actually had this conversation, not in major detail, but I did talk to Diane about this the other day. And I believe the breakdown was at one point, 20% for the village, 80% for the town. So since I'm pretty decent at math, $5,100 total, the 20% for the, for the village would be $1,020 for us to be involved. I had this conversation with Bob Klaus a little bit too, in reference to it, which I think I, he's actually gonna be the liaison for it. I'll make sure I'm right about this. Yes, next year, if we do get involved, this year, next year, I'd like to work it a little differently between us and the town and actually get a little more hands-on and get some other people on the list. That being said, how's everyone feel about it?
They looking to do the vendor thing again?
I can't answer you that because I don't know, because that's obviously under the town pavilion. But I can say this, if it's something that you wanna talk about, I have no problem talking to the supervisor about it and making it happen because why wouldn't we?
I thought it was good last time.
It was great.
Had everybody in the community, different organizations, well, parents, all, whatever.
Absolutely.
I thought it was great. I'd like to get involved with it, yeah, why not?
Okay, so can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, motions and resolutions, let's see. Can I get a motion to hire, I hope I don't beat this last name up, Gerald, do you pronounce this last name?
Maruski.
Oh, that's not too bad.
Maruski.
I would hope you two guys would know that. Okay, that was a test, that was, okay. Maruski, as a part-time DPW labor contingent upon passing the pre-employment drug screening.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'd like, can I get a motion to transfer $250,000 from the general fund account to New York Class?
I'll make the motion to transfer $250,000.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
It's just transferring to different bank accounts, it's still in general fund.
Okay, that's.
Not in a reserve account or anything, yeah.
It's not becoming a reserve account?
No.
No, it's still general fund, but it will just make more interest there.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to set a special meeting regarding the fiscal year 2024 budget? And let me go into a little detail.
I'll start this.
Let me, let me go into a little more detail. When we go into executive session, we're gonna talk about this, but I'd like to set up a meeting for Monday. Christine, what's the date?
The 24th.
The 24th, and 7 o'clock. I know that's gonna be a little difficult for some, but I can promise you this, it's gonna be a very short meeting and that's the only thing on the agenda is the budget.
Monday, the 24th?
If seven doesn't work, we can make it.
It's my birthday.
Is it really your birthday?
No.
It did on Tuesday, definitely make that, but Monday cannot make it. I'm just making, don't, because I made it.
Are you available on Tuesday? Well, Tuesday being the what day? Tuesday being the 25th. Now you're making an issue for me, it's my 25th, it's my 25th anniversary, my watch is the audience. All right, listen, okay.
We're built for.
Tuesday, yeah, work comes first, I like that, okay, that's fine, I agree with you, priorities.
I'm doing it at 6:00 so that you still have time to go out afterwards.
Yes, does, does that work for everyone, 6:00 o'clock?
Tuesday or?
Tuesday, the 25th at 6:00.
Does that work? I promise no one's staying even if it is your birthday. Okay. Thank you, so can I get a motion to have a meeting at, what time did we decide?
6:00.
6:00, 25th at 6:00.
On the 25th.
I'll make the motion to have a meeting on Tuesday, 25th at 6:00 PM, here.
Second.
Here. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve the bills?
I made the bill, pay the bills, order $10,706.05, order $8,453.90, and file $2,029.30.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before we go into the executive session, Mr. Murray, just one quick question on liaisons. I see. All right, you got me listed for the Old School Community Center and then Lance has Historical Society and OHSSC. I assume that Old School Community Center also.
Oh.
No, 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 no.
Oh, SCC? How does that work, SCC? Oh, maybe, yes, you know, that isn't a state because they were on the same line before, so we'll cross that out and I'll amend that.
Okay.
That's what it stands for. And let me say this.
Something old school.
Yes, correct. Bob, yes, I'll, I'll answer your question about it. I'd still like you to go to both, but I kind of was trying to split up liaison chips to kind of make it fair and even, even though some people have a little less, a little more. So my suggestion would be this, I know you go to these events because I've seen you at these events, at the Historical Society I'm talking about, so I would still love for you to go. If Lance can't make it or you wanna get back to Lance as far as what went on, he wants to report or you wanna take that, that's fine. I'm not, I guess the difference between myself and last time, liaison chips, just, I'm looking for the, for the public to know what's going on as far as stuff, which I know you're good at talking about, so I would say this, if both of you go to the event, if all, if all two of us go to the event, bring something back, that's it. That's the reason I broke it up. I know you had both before.
I'm still a little confused though, so does Lance have the Historical Society and I have the Old School?
Yes.
Okay.
That's how, that's how I broke it up.
That's fine.
I'm not crazy, I wouldn't take you with the Old School.
I hate this matter.
Okay, can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Go move.
Second.
Can't get out till you go first here, guys.
Yep, no.
Not too bad. Can't get your baby. Pop it out.
Yes. Yes.
Need water?
I'll answer you, yes.
I got my bottle out in the car.
You don't have to stay if you don't.
I gotta stay for a couple of hours.
Oh, okay.
I'll take a break.
I'll be quick.
Yeah. Is that your school?
Yeah.
Take the good day to come back?
Yeah.
I had no choice, I was going on vacation.
Yep.
I was going down south, you had it.
You gave the open air.
I go there, you, you gotta go.
Actually, I had to come back to Florida.
You were coming back from Florida, I was heading to South Carolina.
Right, yeah. Oh, why are you coming back to?
I just rode.
Wait, did you? Yeah. Oh, we were making good time on the flight. The pilot comes out and says, no, we're about 20 minutes ahead of schedule. About ready to land and, and we get detoured. We're flying into New Haven. We got super cheap prices coming out of there. It was a, they were $59 apiece flying out of there. And coming back from Florida, they were $72.
Can't do that, you can't drive that.
Oh, you're clear.
No.
So I guess we're ready like hell in New Haven. They, so they weren't letting anybody land. We got rerouted to Bradley. But everybody got rerouted to Bradley. So he comes back out a few minutes later and says, well, there's no gates available at Bradley or being rerouted to Rhode Island. I was like, oh, look at that, Jesus. And we're, we're gonna have to refuel and we'll be on standby until they give us the deal clear to.
Land.
To land if I can. And, and because they have no privileges at Rhode Island, we're just waiting to get approval for fuel. So it's like, oh, we're just sitting here, sitting here.
Ah, that sucks.
And then he said, and then there were people who were asking him to get off, and I guess he finally reached somebody in, in the tower, and he's, look, we have no security here. People get off the plane, they can't get back on because there's no security to check them back in.
Wow. You're stuck on the plane.
So, they finally worked it out where people wanted to get off, he says, okay, you can get off, the only thing you can take off, take with you is whatever, just carry on.
Right, we do.
Can't take any luggage from the cargo base because there's, there's no, there's nobody to offload the plane. They can't sort it, everything on the plane is going to New Haven. So, if you willing to get off, you wanna just take your carry on with you, that's fine, but notice, you're not getting back on the plane. And your rental car agency is about a mile and a half from here, so you're gonna have to walk. People have to get off.
Really? I would've waited it up a bit.
So it was like, find out later, we're finally getting off the plane.
No, that sucks.
Because once, once we finally, once we finally flew back to New Haven, they were so backed up, we were sitting in a tarmac for another hour and a half, just sitting in the plane.
I've done that before down in Dallas.
Yeah.
Flying out of Dallas to go back to Stewart, and, but the wind conditions from Chicago, because that was a, the lady, you know, the weather was too bad, we sat for an hour and a half in Dallas in the air on plane. This is.
I felt better sitting in Rhode Island than I did in New Haven because it's like, we're here, just, door, damn door. Get myself, get her out of my car, whoa. Catching this real one of those freezorators, come on, just get off, get off the damn plane.
Wow.
My son, who, he only lives like about fifteen minutes from the airport, and he says, I can see your plane. Yeah, yeah, I got your coffee.
Every time I got it, it was cold.
I used coffee.
I can't, I can't remember, every airplane I ever been on, every flight, every, besides leaving Dallas, it's all been good, I never had any issues.
It's the first one.
And I flew to China, that fifteen and a half, that was a smooth sail on the whole way, no problems.
This is the first time.
Germany, that was six and a half hour, that was great. The only thing I do when I fly, I get emergency window seat or a bolt kick, if I have the door, I have a little more.
More space.
Yeah, a little more room, yeah, so we went from being twenty minutes ahead of schedule to that five hours, five hours late.
My own, the first time I flew into Washington National going back to school, this was nineteen eighty-three, this was shortly after the Air Florida jet crashed into the river. Was sitting over, sitting at a window seat, not over the wing. You swear you were going down, you're landing on that damn bridge.
Oh, yeah, you got a lot, some of them, they get a little close, I'm telling you, with airports you get into.
Yeah.
National, Washington National, I swear, we were, we were that far above the tops of the cars.
LAX, you get, you're coming down in, sometimes the way they bring the plane in over the ocean is like, we're going out of Vegas in there.
Yeah, I've done that.
How good is this pilot?
I believe, the worst airport I've ever been into, Chicago, if it's Chicago, it's just the way it's set up.
Trip out here.
Most people left already since, but we're just gonna, we're gonna go through that and then we're gonna have the New York's.
Okay.
Good morning.
Great, thanks, Christine.
But after that time flying into Delta, into National Airport, like, I get, I get over a wing, I still let the radar. But I'm over a wing, I can't see the water underneath me.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, now, when we flew out of, flew out of Germany, New Amsterdam, and that airport, Holland Air, what they do, there's no gates. The crew of the plane does your security check.
Really?
They're, so something happens on the plane, it's, the pilot, they're all out there doing the scan, checking your bags and checking the.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
Oh, that's very interesting.
We had, we're, we're in Florida, we're going to security.
They do have some.
Yeah, I don't have no money, I'll get it.
My wife, but she has soft scrubs for, for her.
Hopefully by next year, we'll have more than eight.
And it's like.
Because I still have, the seniors still have.
It's probably like a pint jar.
All the seniors have.
A little bit of oil on the top of the scrub mixture.
That was a big seller for me last year.
Well, there's three jars in this one, the, since she's got, goes through the security check.
Yesterday.
And.
Those kids were good.
So I grabbed my stuff, I get through security first, the guy goes, sir, is this your bag? And I'm like.
One of the, one of the junior.
Do I just keep one, you don't even get one, like, junior?
The daughter, I didn't, I thought she.
No daughters?
I like that, I didn't know.
I got, oh, jeez.
Because last time I knew she was from middle school.
I go, yeah.
And she was like.
Step over here, sir.
No, that day, she's out.
Says, serving the sheriff.
Almost installed, I am, it's like.
It's gross, I'm, I'm talking.
I know I know you, but how do I know you?
Opens it up and pulls out these jars and, yeah, it's, it's like a, maybe a half inch of oil on, on top of this sixteen ounce jar. There's, that's too much liquid in the jar. And Nancy paid like twenty-five dollars a jar for these things, she's got three jars and she pulls out one, she said, well, there's two more in there, and they're separated because I don't want them banging against each other. So he's digging through there and pulls out the three jars and, I go, what, you've got something to give your wife tonight? Says, I can't do that, sir, I really, yeah. He said, why, you go back through security, I checked your bag, and, and we, we got like twenty minutes, I'm looking at the line, I'm like, and it's another. I don't know how far back we had to, to run to go, I'm like, yeah, there's no way that's happening.
That's weird, the last time, I seen, they'll, they'll take the bag right there and check it, they'll put it off to the side and they're done right at the door of the plane.
Do this.
If the thing is too big to go in the over, they take and give it to the people who put in the belly of the plane, it's just kinda.
No, because we asked them, we said, well, what else can we do? So I'll have to take this, yeah, sure you do.
It all depends on the, the security too.
Yeah, I think he was doing it real hard.
Yeah. Wally at one time, and in my shaving kit, I had a little pocket knife, I had it there for years, but after nine eleven, they can't, I didn't, but I never took it out.
Yeah.
I flew out of, out of Wally, no problem, they check, I get down, I'm flying out of Memphis, we was looking, because I went to Saint, that's when I went down to Saint Jude's to drop that check call that time. Trying to get back out of the airport, to go on my trip going to Dallas, they're like, you can't take that, and I'm like, so you put it in a envelope mail, I'm like, you know, it ain't worth my time. He threw it in the bin with all the letters and the, and at the end of the day, they're all, he was taking all that stuff over.
Right.
It wasn't that important to me. But we're trying to though, I had my batteries, extra batteries for my camera, they pulled me, that's scary, when you get pulled into a security office in another country, that's another.
That's very.
What's the, you're showing them, there's a battery for the camera, you know, it's all they are.
Oh, come this way, sir. I'm not going in that room.
I got my passport, I'm leaving, moving back on the plane.
My dad had issues with, he had issues with one of his, with his prescriptions going overseas. He forgot and put them in the coke container rather than leaving them in the bottles. They finally let him through.
Yeah, they get stripped on certain things.
Certain things, yeah.
Open bottles, you're not allowed to have like shampoo, you only have, like.
Yeah, right.
Marine, they wanna, they're gonna go out, in a couple of years, they're gonna go out west, flying to Vegas and do the tour out there, she's like, I'll just go to Walmart instead of buying, I'll just go. Right. Well, go to the local Walmart, buy every, all that kind of stuff when I get out there, and I won't worry about trying to check stuff like that.
It's a Walmart. It's not worth the aggravation?
No.
Nope, I use whatever's in the hotel. And then they put it in my bag and take it home, it goes in the checkbook though. Those bottles are only, they ain't big. And I only wash, I don't wash my hair that often anyway, soap I use theirs, you know, I don't, not that piggy. Probably won't even, Brian doesn't even bother changing when he's done.
So you look good.
These days.
Yeah, feel pretty good.
Yeah.
Take your mind, man.
I recognize you.
Where?
I don't know, I'm Rory Brady, how are you?
I know the, I'm the informant here.
Okay.
That's Frank.
Hey, Frank, Rory Brady.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, likewise, hi, Rory.
Meredith, I'm just, I'm a community member.
Very nice to meet you.
I just recognized you, I'm Palmer.
Yeah, pleasure, pleasure.
How are you?
I'm good, guys, I'm a young lady, all right. I got a flat on the way out here, so that was a good start to the.
Oh, welcome.
Oh, yeah, I'm like, kidding me, so, anyway, yeah.
And where do you live?
I'm a Goshen, Goshen guy, I guess, yeah, I got an office in Goshen. Graduated from Goshen. Was you originally? Yeah. Whereabouts, which, which part, did you say you're from Goshen? Graduated. Graduated from Goshen. Goshen, yeah, I lived down in Goshen, actually, I lived on six and a half station road. No kidding? The farm, the farmhouse? Before the prison. I was gonna, that's one type, Wells Farm Road, so we know, there's a different, were you on the, like? Six and a half station. The corner there, the White House in the corner? No, right in the middle of it. There used to be a bi-level there, right? Actually, just below the prison. Yeah, there was a bi-level house there for years. That was Judge Gillette used to live at that level. Yeah, teacher at the high school. Yeah, I, I lived just down from there. No kidding? Yeah, I grew up in Springland, right, right near the high school. Yeah. I was judge actually, for about ten years in the town and village, so Gillette, who was Gillette and another person than me, actually. Yeah. And he was, he was there for a while. He was tough, he was tough, Judge Gillette. Yeah, he was a tough English teacher. Yeah, that's, yeah, she was, and he was just like that on the bench, so, that's cool.
How was the fight before you?
Tom Seon, who was there for years. How'd the meeting go? Well, they were in the executive session, but otherwise. Usually our meetings are forty-five minutes. Yeah. Well, that's something major, they're a little bit long, but most times are efficient, efficient, yeah. It's a, it's a good thing. Yeah, it's a small village, now a whole lot going on. Yeah, I was, I was trying to, you know, do, do my homework, and decent amount of intermittent support agreements from Mount Hope, obviously, which makes sense, you know. DPW is, is out of the village, and then town has their own. Highway. Okay, all right.
We have water, we have sanitation.
Everything's septic?
No, septic, we don't have, the prison takes care of the septic system, they have their own over there.
No kidding?
We don't have septic, everybody else, the village, they all have their own septic tank.
Oh, yeah, that's what, that's what I meant, sorry, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're, we're looking at, and I represent town in Goshen as well, and town's got just a highway department, looking to potentially do a DPW or form a DPW out there. There's enough work for it, there's enough money for it, so, but, that's a big gig, DPW field. My original, when I was trustee, which is where I started municipal work, I, as the water commissioner, and that's, learn a lot. And Goshen, and water in Goshen is, I mean, everywhere, it's cold, right? But I mean, in Goshen, it's like feast or famine, man, it was.
Jim, can, remember Jim Kennedy?
I don't, I know, Nas was, Mike Nasly's my close friend, but I don't know Jim Kennedy.
He was there years ago.
Okay, probably predates me a little bit, but, yeah, that's good. Did you start, you started here?
Mm-hmm, I started here June ninth of eighty-six.
Holy shit, man. So you're right here? You got your years of time, I did the quick math on that, I'm like, you could. Hey, he helped build the village. Yeah, for real, man, that's cool, that's, that's a lot of, that's a pretty cool history, good field.
I started in ninety, ninety-one, part-time.
Well, shit, you're just brand new, come on, man.
Then I went full-time in ninety-six, so.
Wow, and you, you got, you're, you're both like local, local guys?
Live right here in the village.
Oh, that's.
John lives.
I live, not even.
Two just the miles.
Just outside the village, yeah.
That's great. Grew up around here all my life, so. Minnesick School, right?
Yeah.
Boy, that school was changed, huh?
Cool.
Oh, crap. Just those fields, like, I even from when I was, I went through the nineties, I can't believe what they've done, this facility's great, grown a lot.
Yeah.
Gonna keep growing. Yeah, it was a lot of, I mean, one of the last affordable areas in, in the county that you can get a piece of property.
They have a nice softball school, softball field.
Yeah, well, Minnesick softball is legendary.
Yeah.
And wrestling, wrestling programs, my nephew was, was a pretty good wrestler from Goshen, Minnesick was unbelievable. Two, two guys, right, number one in the nation.
From Minnesick?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like studs.
They had a couple of girls leave Minnesick here, one of them, she's on the international U S team now.
Wrestling?
Wrestling.
Okay. Jervis has turned out some good wrestlers. Jervis, oh, yeah, well, I mean, come on, that's legendary, those Olympians are, yeah. Yeah. They were twins, weren't they? Yeah, yeah, all right, definitely were, they were definitely brothers, I thought they were twins, I don't know only that, that's like eight, mid-eighties, right? Yeah. 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 Yeah, ports.
What do you mean, you got purple hair, you're, you're, you're a youth right now.
You were, you know, it's not feeling off you.
To cover the gray.
Yeah. Whatever works.
I'm a lot older than a lot of people think I am.
You hide it well.
Thank you.
You guys are sticking around for the reorg meeting or just, just shooting the shit? Yeah. Reorg.
Got nothing better to do?
Wow. I was thinking about it, but I think I'm gonna be heading out. Is Brian Latimer Paul's relative of Paul, the old judge, do you need no judge?
I don't know.
No, I don't know, okay.
A lot of liars. Well, he might be, I don't know, he's from that.
And I'm not sure Paul's from, you know, I, I just wish the judge.
There're latterers in West, used to be latterers in West Town.
Yeah, that would, then that would.
But I don't think you'd relate it, they're the same.
I'm trying to remember spelling, but. It's not working on. Good. Marks, yeah, good, so marking the, the league plate. There you go. Next, we're starting T-ball. There you go, there you go.
Oh, my grandson also played.
Put in P W football as well. Yeah. What, what was he guarding?
How old is he now?
Uh, he just turned, just turned five.
Just turned five.
And they're stuck at the five.
Yeah.
Oh, is that right?
You want a lot of money for that, one hundred, a hundred and seventy dollars from the plan, yeah.
Totally.
Whatever, you know, he's going running to fly you.
Yeah, it's just Christine, one of these, I want some a little more, you know, where the most of the.
Well, well, you just, I never realized, you know, they got games every Saturday, and I'm like, one more thing, I'm like, what's to do?
Of course they do. One more thing to do in the weekend.
I think like I got enough for what to do.
And they'll wanna do the traveling.
The granddaughter, she's doing gymnastics, one granddaughter, the other granddaughter, she's too young, she's only just turned four. My other grandson is still before the September.
See, one's not so bad, it's when they, when there's two, and then they're traveling in different directions, and you're like, different days, and you're like, oh my god.
Well, they had a total of five grandchildren, plus, then my boys, my one, my niece, Justin, he'll be eighteen this year, and Lily just, Lily thirteen, I'm like, I'm like.
Yeah. Conversation.
I'm gonna be eighteen in September, yeah.
Driving, telephone calls.
Where the hell are the time gone?
I don't know, well, Lily's fourteen, thirteen this year.
It's like, holy. Raise that up, turn it to the, um, turn it to the board.
They're good, they're good, young men.
Yep. He just kinda got me running there.
Gotta run something.
I need that resolution back.
You're aware of that?
Yeah. What does? They were strong all the two now, they were like, and remember when you were talking?
He's, yeah, he's national scholar.
No.
He's in double A, there's four, there's four wrestlers. Usually, they're not that sharp.
Your cousin Stippies, and your uncle Stippies' daughter, when she had her egg on the market, you know, she came up one side.
What is that? The hell with you, twenty-one.
Time clock. You can't be twenty-one. Well, worse part, when I went to you guys, you and Bobby's graduation, you know, down, oh, my kid, I'm starting kindergarten, I'm like, I graduated, I should have let you. That is so funny.
So.
I don't give any advice.
At which I don't get anything. Okay.
So on each end.
Yeah, you tell them back to you.
It wouldn't even blow up, did it?
No.
You know, well, he has a little middle name, I don't remember.
Spilled.
Yeah.
Some flames, Kendall, Kendall, right? Oh, no doubt, and, and I certainly know how to, I know how to, quite a bit. Anyway, and I'm like. So, I am, that's every two weeks, though, this weekend, right? I just like, it's a pretty hip effect.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, it's like the.
That made my day, that made my day.
And it was really. It's very hard, it's, it's, it's impossible, and it's like, I'm not in control of the situation either. Decisions or plans, so I can make a plan, a plan, very, not an ideal way to, to do it. Gentlemen, we're just gonna step outside if they come in.
Yeah, no problem.
I'll be there, I don't want to be in the middle. Getting emailed about, um, the Sussex guy dying, blind dude died.
Who?
Yeah, the guy in Sussex.
Sussex?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 I saw, cause that girl did a runner or something for him. Yeah, heart attack, or he had a fire or something, and then went home. Go and sleep away, huh?
Pass my bedtime. Bedtime, we could sleep all night. These four thirty starts for nine.
I went to art auction in the year.
I switched my hours to six to two, figured out really, the traffic.
But just get up early to go, right?
I wanted to get myself proof, that's turnover time, so, you know.
How long does it take you to get there, huh?
In the morning, it's like forty-five to fifty minutes, something like that. This morning, I, uh, the plastic flap, was like, I thought something was wrong, I don't wanna stop on seventeen, then I get off on six, I'm like, there's a pole up there, I'll just make a there, you know, whatever, over there. Those potholes, I saw, and I slid down, like, kind of like this.
Should be in the living room.
But it, you saw it, it was like just hanging, I was like, whoo, I thought, you know, you know, with the candle. That's the only thing that sucks traveling, you know?
Right, there you go.
Great, something.
You go down with the, the Berron Bridge, right?
Yeah, and well, no, Route Six, and then Parkway, for the first day, but past that beach, or whatever place.
Yeah.
Fifteen, it's right there. It's not bad.
Yeah.
Up and over.
Just trying to have a show, trying to stop.
The other day, it got out, Railroad Avenue, it's like probably, probably half a mile long, gotta make the left, the ways thing regroups, and I looked at his cop car, and like. So I was just sitting there, there was a school bus, I guess the guy cut the school bus off, or wherever they hit him, or, you know, I was sitting there, I'm like, hey, cause you can't, you can't make any rights, cause it's all blocked off, nine W, you have to come out, that's the road, the white, I'm like.
We used, we used to go down, do the fireworks, get down around, and go all fucking.
Yeah, oh, did you go out on Bull Line Point?
The way we did fireworks on Point, then on the other side.
They do that bonfire, too.
And we did that, over there where they, used to be the old, um, furniture factory over there years ago.
Yeah, they get power, like this huge case for the, the veterans, or something, some humongous pile, or whatever.
This is my clerk, they had a point on it, yeah.
Yeah, well, O R made it, donated it to, butter him up. There's a twelve pointer, three eight pointers, or four, well, there was this year, someone was looking around, identifying more, they go right under our fence, you get passed, and they gotta fix it, you have to do this, chase the deer. People feeding it. You know, that goes, those kind of. I need my neighbor, call us out. Get a hunter, yeah. Well, there's, there's a deer over here, said, okay, it won't move, I said, well, why do you think it wouldn't move? Well, I'm, I'm driving the park, I invite it, and like, the deer lives with people, there's people here in the park all day, all the time, I said, they don't run from us, and the tank farm is like twelve feet from me. Really? Said, yeah, it's the first time coming out here, and I, she said, no, you fix the mangy, though, a little bit hair out, I said.
It's winter.
I said, what season is it? Springtime? I said, weather's over, it's, it's shutting. Who's goddamn mangy?
You can get the way out to brush it, and you look pretty. And nobody out there like you look pretty, you know? Hell.
Come on, pal.
My mom, step mom, sure enough, if she don't put the feed out for them, pick them up on the porch.
The porch, like, hey, you ready, you all right?
Better knock the one dead. She opened up your pipes, you're sitting there like, yo. Sitting there like, yo, be gone for me. You don't bother me, I don't bother you, come to me.
Yeah, drill, I gotta work until, put the trucks ready for Saturday, and then.
Yeah, it looks like the weather's gonna break you, it should be already raining.
Saturday?
They stay in room for Saturday?
Not, not a big, that big of a.
Afternoon, alright, that's good.
Afternoon?
I'll take that, later, later.
Now they moved to Sunday, so.
I got nothing.
Yep. I don't know yet.
No weather at all. Yeah, I was just gonna say, I used to do Legos, and there was, uh, connect things, and my dad used to be a soldier, and I was a little guy.
Remember coming here with my brother, yeah?
Cause it was like a, what the hell was that? They weren't Legos, they were something else, I want to say connects. And I had like a briefcase, or a briefcase, we put it in the heat room, put it up.
Lincoln Logs, they're better than falling back today.
Lincoln Logs, yeah.
They heard this is bad, stepping on two.
Oh, yeah.
Legos.
Legos, the Mashbox cars. Benny had the, uh, our wife bought, whatever, Spider-Man figurines. And one time, Jay was like, that's mine, in front of my mom, so she went out and bought them like, all forty-eight, Jerry, we have a thirty of them, but, so they were like, constantly.
Lily has, he's, he's still, like, still full around, his army men, he likes to set up battles here. Well, we have one cat that loves army men. He goes and he steals them, and he sits and plays with them upstairs, for hours, throwing them down, pick up, throw downstairs, and then go back down, and then pick up, and pick them, and I come up to him. But, well, it's like, leave my army, no, I got that stuff, don't touch my. He says, he's getting at, not getting at the eight or he's starting to change things, but still, I said he touched Lily.
Act like a kid.
Yeah.
Mostly like, do they go outside and act like a kid, please? Tell them what to do, and I go, so if I finish this down, I'll be labeled, I have to be able to play for two days.
No, I can't. I wanna sue Xbox and Playstation, I said, I wanna, do not put a pause button in. I had a tory, there was always a pause button, you just.
Yeah, they tend to order, right?
Above the game.
Will we get on you?
Yeah, I know, we got any good.
The whole, we have a group, they'll do a group face time together, and all in there, yeah.
Lily has a good friend, he lives out in Wisconsin, they're on all the time, playing together, just.
But someone was asking, who are you on?
I had, well, not the father, and he had to off the phone to make sure it was okay, he's the one that makes everything look good, it's a yes. So, you know. He had to be battling.
Benny, man, he's always been angry, punching this thing, but that's whatever I'm gonna do, wanna take that computer?
No, Dad, we just got, you were doing.
I said, I'm what, video game?
Yeah.
Said, really, you're on the video game, bye.
Dad.
And he's smashing stuff, and we hit it, stuff, you lose, you lose. And today, I just had to call him, he walked in, he had the cross, he was just about to score, every guy took him right out.
So who's a football tackle?
I said, what, I said, you the other day, kinda whacked him right in the leg, I said, number? Said, what, I said, one number. You mean? I said, what number player was it? Oh, I don't know, I said, well. Know who the number is? Every other buddy, you know, like, you guys got, this, it was Kingston, and they're like, they go play all the rules, you know, like, you could hack, you could whack their stick, and like, kind of things, then he stand over here, the guy's here, and he's like. Should we go?
Sorry.
Yes.
Oh, boy, it's nice in here.
Can I get a motion to come out of executive session?
Make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Um, Christine, I guess we're just gonna roll into a reorg meeting now?
Yeah.
Anything else I need to add to that? As far as coming out of executive session?
Adjourn the meeting. Oh, adjourn, we have to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Alright, can I get a motion to adjourn our meeting?
I make that motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, we're gonna do that in a reorg meeting, absolutely, yes. If you say the fledge again, um. I guess we're basically gonna just walk into this here, so let's see. Reorg meeting, um, I'd like to call the meeting to order, can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, this is our twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four reorg meeting, if there's a fair thing to say, okay? Everyone have the sheet for appointments as far as for liaison shifts, something like this. I'm not gonna read every single one down, I'm just gonna basically ask for, um, motions on each one here, so. Um, if you guys wanna read down the list of why I'm doing this, feel free, but I'm gonna basically do liaisons, um, and I'm gonna break it up here, so. Can I get a motion, um, I guess this, can I get a motion for, um, the liaison section of this?
For discussion, or?
No, just.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, I didn't know, make that motion.
Thank you, oh, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can I get a motion for the appointed officials? Section of this.
Go back to page two.
Yeah, I'm gonna do it. I'll tell you what, that's fine, uh, Rory?
Yeah.
Um, welcome, um, I'd like to introduce Rory Brady to the board, uh, this pop clout, obviously our names are up here, and Brian.
I didn't bring my name tag, but.
That's alright, why not?
Well, pleasure, everybody, thank you for the opportunity.
You wanna give a little introduction to you and Rory?
Sure, um, my name's Rory Brady, I'm from Goshen, New York, currently live in Goshen, I have a law office there. I'm the town attorney and Z B A attorney for the town of Goshen for the past year and a half. Uh, prior to that, I was counsel for Village Bloomberg, about six years prior. Um, I have a litigation background, I was a trial attorney, um, and originally in the criminal field, is kinda where I made my name, um, do domestic relations work as well, uh, trial work there. I was a trustee in the village of Goshen in two thousand twelve and thirteen, um, and then I was elected village justice in twenty thirteen. Uh, town justice in twenty fifteen, where I sat in both of those positions until I took the town attorney role, which required me to give the town justice role, and, um. And subsequently gave up the village justice role to focus on municipal work, town of Goshen is quite busy, always been busy, but we have a, a new supervisor who's, um, got a pretty aggressive plan, we're up for a comprehensive plan review, so. A lot of things going on there, plus the Z B A role. I have, uh, my personal life, I have three children, um, currently, uh, divorced, I think that status will remain, I don't plan on being married anymore, so I guess that would be, uh, you know, but hey, listen, crazy things are passing, so, um. I brought along a paralegal, Tara, who is really embarrassed that I just introduced her, but, um, that is, uh, that is the secret to my success, certainly in my recent years, so, um. She's someone that, that I incorporate into all my work, and I've already introduced her to Christine, cause I know that's how the show runs here, so, uh. I'm looking forward to working with you guys, I, you know, I've known Brian, uh, on and off for a few years, we've crossed over, I feel like I know you from somewhere, I don't know, sports, maybe, we crossed over and.
Speeding ticket, Goshen?
I'm, not allowed to, not allowed to bring that up, but, you know, if he brings a attorney client, then that's alright, but, um. No, I'm looking forward to working with you guys, I mean, I have village experience, town experience, I, I do like in Goshen, and two, you know, there are similarities in the. I'm looking forward to working with you guys, I mean, I have village experience, town experience, I, I do like in Gosha, and to, you know, there are similarities in the village-town, the symbiotic relationship, the IMAs. The jail, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of overlap there, and I'm from the area, so I, I do have some personal knowledge of, of the geography of the area, and some of the, the challenges and the understanding, you know, water versus sewer and things, but, you know, I, I. There'll be a learning curve like anything else, I, and this will work as similar, but every municipality's different, so, and I know we have a new mayor, which, um, you know, will present your own challenges, so I, I hope to, uh. Certainly be an asset, and, uh, you know, I don't just work for the mayor, it's, it's the whole group here, and, and got to meet some of the folks here, and. So, I hope to, uh, be an asset for you guys, so, certainly, if there's any questions about my background or anything, feel free to ask, if I've ever met, that's kind of my thing, so. Alright, appreciate it. Can I grab a seat? Alright, thank you.
Is it the right height?
Yes, perfect, yeah.
Alright, on that note, I'll make a motion to approve those. The appointment officials, okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Wait, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Party officials.
I, um, I just, I know the meeting.
And Bob?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, can I get a, can I get a motion, um, for miscellaneous assignments, section of this? Just so everyone can see my sheet, I'm just kinda doing it in sections, so anything that's underlined, we're gonna go through.
I make a motion that we approve after you read all the miscellaneous assignments, thank you, Mayor.
That's second.
Thank you, Lance, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I get a motion to approve professional services?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, can I get a motion for the planning board?
I'll make a motion for the planning board as well.
Christine, who is, um, I know there's people on, okay, I can see by the dates here who they are.
Yes, Brian Palazzano is the one that is up for reappointment, and he, and I, I checked with both Brian and Maureen, Brian and Maureen are the, and zoning members that are up for reappointment. For their five-year terms.
I'll second the.
Thank you, all in favor?
That's his term.
Thank you, uh, can I get a motion for the secretary, Z B A chairperson part of this?
I make the motion?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion for the fire department list?
Absolutely, I'll make the motion for the fire department.
Brian, you skipped the zoning board yourself, sorry.
Okay, that's right, I'm back to, um.
I second the fire department.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that was a test, thank you for catching that, uh, the zoning board of appeals section of this, who was reappointed for?
Maureen.
Okay, God, thank you, you said that, okay, can I get a motion for the zoning board of appeals?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, can I get a motion for the committees?
I make the motion that we approve the committee's, I'll recommend it, Mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, we're gonna skip now to the meeting nights, um, meeting nights are listed, obviously, no changes there, um. Can I get a motion for the meeting nights as listed?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I know this is long, but we gotta do this, so apologize here, uh, reports, um, can I get a motion for the report section of this?
I make the motion for the report, made by the mayor.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, office hours, uh, not much changes to this, um, I am gonna keep the same office hours in the evening as the previous mayor, but I also kind of had headed on here by, by appointment, obviously, anyone wants to talk to me. Uh, my business cards are in the lobby, I have my number on them, my new cell phone number, so, can I get a motion for the office hours?
I'll make a motion for the office hours.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, um, I asked Christine to add this, this was not a section that was on this before, and we don't need to really prove it, but I asked her to add all the holidays so we can all see it, so you know what holidays, obviously, the village. Recognizes, and I also asked her to make a list of meeting dates, so if you're, uh, if you're a little, uh, yeah, if you're a little nervous about, uh, do we have a meeting or not, here's your list, okay? Um, back to, um, the resolution parts of this, which would be. Newspaper section.
Well, the newspaper is not an, uh, the, um, newspaper and the engineer and the insurance are not resolutions, so if you, we'd like to just do those three, and then we could do the.
Yes, it's still a newspaper, it's written out of Pennsylvania, I, I hope at some point, uh, while being in this seat, that we get to change newspapers and find something that we can change in here, cause, yes, I have probably the same feeling that you do, but. For now, that's who we gotta use for public notices and stuff, so, it is what it is, if we find a newspaper that we can change it to, or anyone wants to look into it, please bring it to the board and, throw it up here, so can I get a motion for that section that Christine just talked about?
I'll, uh, I'll make the motion for this, uh, section of reorg meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
No, I went back, I'm sorry, right under committees, committees, and right below that, it didn't really have a, a reflection, yeah, title's, alright, Christine.
Ready?
Great.
All right, you need a resolution to adopt the investment policy with no changes to last year, that's for them.
Now, this is the investment policy, okay?
Now, each one, so I'll make Christine.
The investment policy you have with no changes to last year, it's this one, whereas comments have been solicited from all officers in the village involving investment policy with no changes to last year. Motion we adopt the investment policy as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, this is something that we can all look at, just currently, right now, we're not making any changes to it, um, if someone has a feeling that they wanna make changes to it, please bring it, and we'll talk about it in the future, but, okay, next.
Um, you need a board resolution to adopt the procurement policy with no changes from last year.
Will we approve the resolution?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, before we go farther, I'm gonna add to what Brian's gonna ask me, um, I would like to put this on the agenda for the second meeting in May, anyone that would like to change it, or have any changes, please email, I don't care how we communicate, text message. I a hundred percent agree that changes need to be made to this, a hundred percent, it's just didn't get to it before this meeting, so going forward, let's look at it in May and make changes, it's fair enough, so that was two, can I get, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, Christine.
Board resolution for the, you don't read the whole resolution for this, whereas the board of trustees has determined to authorize payment in advance of audit claims for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges. And whereas all such claims shall be presented at the next regular meeting for audit, and whereas the claimant and the officer incurring or approving the same shall be jointly and separately liable for any amount disallowed by the board of trustees. Now therefore be it resolved, section one, that the board of trustees authorize payment in advance of audit claims for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges, and all such claims shall be presented at the next regular meeting. For audit, and the claimant and officer incurring or approving the same shall be jointly and separately liable for any amount disallowed by board of trustees, section two, that the resolution shall take effect immediately, it's the same as last year.
Thank you, Christine, can I get a motion?
Make the motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're working our way down the list, what do we have next, mileage?
Yes, whereas the board of trustees has determined to pay fixed rate for mileage as reimbursed to officers and employees of the village who use their personal automobiles while performing their official duties on behalf of the village. Now therefore be it resolved that the board of trustees shall approve reimbursements to such officers and employees at the rate of sixty-five point five cents per mile, that's the federal, oh, um, federal.
Rate.
Rate, yes, thank you, this is long, section two, that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Thanks, sir.
I second the change.
All in favor?
Yeah, they say it's rate, it is.
On our board meeting sheet, it's just, it says fifty-eight, it should read, obviously.
That's for last.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
And the designation of our banks, whereas the board of trustees has determined that the village law four dash four point one three two requires the debt to, requires the designation of banks or trust companies for the deposit of all village monies. Now therefore be it resolved, section one, that the board of trustees does hereby designate following institutions, depositories, and monies received by the village for treasury. Names of institutions, Sterling National Bank and Nite Class, section two, that this resolution shall take effect immediately, and that is the same as last year also.
Now Sterling National Bank is.
Webster.
Name is correct, is that Webster?
Oh, that is, I'm sorry, yeah, that is Webster.
I only go there every day, that's why.
They change their name every year, so, yes, it is Webster.
I just got used to Sterling.
Yes.
You're right, I will make that change.
Okay, um, can I get a motion?
Will we approve the resolution?
Thank you, Bob, can I get a second?
Aye.
Thank you, all in favor, alright.
I wouldn't.
Last. I think, I think we're on that. Now, like, did you read that reserve account?
Yeah. No.
No, that's okay.
Nice to meet you.
You have reserve accounts?
No, I haven't.
Reserve accounts, yes.
Yeah, F, that's it, F to this one?
Yes, for resolutions for the reserve accounts with no changes to last year.
Sorry, I couldn't write that, thank you very much, um, you don't even want to notice, there's no change, are you doing?
Well, we do.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, can I get a?
I'll make the motion if you can say.
Thank you, second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, can I get a, here's a good one, you ready for this one, can I get a motion to close this meeting?
No.
Keep it open. I will make that motion, loud and clear.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you everyone, thankfully, we're able to do a reorg meeting once a year.